Welcome back to the second portion of our commission meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We have scheduled a public hearing. Yes, ma'am. Oh, okay. Commissioner Maddox, are you here?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay, awesome. So we do have a formal. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. So we have scheduled at 6 o'clock, a public hearing. So I'll turn it over now to our county administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number 31 is your public hearing. The first and only public hearing to consider the Ninth Amendment to the Southwood Development of Regional Impact Integrated Development Order. Commissioners, our recommendation is that you conduct this public hearing. We have no speakers on this item. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Are there any speakers on this item?
No.
No speakers. Commissioners? I would like to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Or is there any discussion after the motion?
Yeah. I'll take a motion for staff recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Discussion from commissioners? Hearing none. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. And I vote aye. Commissioner Maddox?
Aye.
Thank you. Anything further, Mrs. County Administrator?
Not on that item.
Thank you. So we are back to our general business item. Uh, Ms. County Administrator, I'll turn it over to you if you have any other comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, before I hand it back to you, Madam Chair, to facilitate the board's vote, I know you heard from another number of speakers before the break. I just wanted to provide the opportunity, we've got Shinkton here who can, you know, this is all his fault, but he can provide any answers to any questions that you might have about any of this. But let me just say, Commissioners too, just to walk it through and sort of simplify, for lack of a better term, this, that obviously very important issue, pretty simple math, though really. And that is that, and I'll just hit a couple of things, and again, Shinkton could talk about how we've at least thought through the various elements of this. And again, the most important thing I should say to you is this is simply an opportunity for the board. You obviously could use to give us whatever direction you like, and we'll be happy to accept it. But the opportunity you have is one that starts with, again, this all started prior to the Children's Services Council issue going on the ballot in 2020. That created, as I said, $9 million. New money, money that wasn't here before. Prior to the CSC issue going on the ballot, the board may recall that the board had to place that issue on the ballot. So there was lots of conversation leading up to that with organizers of the ballot, throughout which case, it was very well understood that this created an opportunity for the board to, even though it's not a lot of money, to realign dollars from Children's Services to the CSC over a period of time. It was so well understood that the board passed a memorandum of understanding between the county and the CSC and the city to work together to identify opportunities over a period of time to best coordinate along those lines. This proposal before you also aligns with several other priorities of the board. It's been mentioned, the homelessness issue's been mentioned, of course. This is an opportunity with, again, a relatively small amount of money relative to the money available allows you to address over the course of two years pressing issues like homelessness, like issues who are no longer benefiting from the infusion of federal dollars that we received to address those, that over the past several years. And again, again, so it's simply an opportunity for the board, consistent with previous direction. We've tried to, upon your most recent direction, further coordinate and communicate with the human services agencies to deal with any transition issues we might have. I can tell you, I've been involved with the CHSP process a very long time, and we've made lots of tweaks and changes over the years to the process, again, all with the intent of leveraging our limited human services dollars, of which we do not have dedicated revenues. So with that in mind, I'd like to ask Shinkton just to talk a little bit about the transition that we have proposed.
Good evening, Commissioners. First off, I want to just say that I am very, very appreciative of all the hard work that our CHSP agencies do, as well as our human service providers provide. They have provided great input and feedback, met with them about nine times over the last couple of months to talk about the proposed realignment and talk through a transition plan and taking into consideration all the concerns, all of the feedback and input, in bringing to you what we brought tonight as far as what you requested. The board asked that, in looking at the realignment, that we brought a transition plan back, and we do it in concert with our human service providers. So that's, that's the steps we took. And I think it was very enlightful, and I think it was very critical that we did that. And looking at that, and so that's why, one of the key things that we do as part of the transition plan is that we assure that there's a safety net where agencies can apply for funding for beginning, for the next two-year funding cycle for CHSP. That's what's critical in developing and looking at this transition plan to make sure that agencies that would not be eligible for Children's Services Council funding still would be able to apply for funding through CHSP. Now, those that are not eligible for CSC dollars would apply through CHSP, and during this current, this upcoming year, we would work with them in partnership with the city, with CSC, with the United Partners of Human Services, UPHS, to prepare them, to provide them technical support and opportunities that may, that may come up for them to be able to apply for CSC funding in the following year, so the second year of the two-year funding cycle. But the goal, of course, was to ensure that there was, there was an opportunity, so that way there is no harm in, in opportunity for them to apply, because remember, at the end of the day, it is a competitive process. CHSP still remains a competitive process that agencies must apply to, funding is not guaranteed. And what we do, and same thing with the CSC, their funding is not guaranteed. But the other thing we wanted to make sure we did with the timeline was in aligning with the CSC, is that we wanted to make sure that when we do open the portal for, for CHSP applications, that it will be in, when we know, in working with the CSC, what their criteria would be for opportunities for funding for early learning, because that's the path that they're headed for the next funding opportunity coming up to the next fiscal year. And if those criterias were either very stringent, that agencies can't apply for, or maybe that they weren't putting enough dollars into that, into doing that opportunity, agencies, again, could still come through CHSP and apply. And that's why we wanted to align that everything we've done, Commissioners, has been consistent with your streeting initiatives and working with the Children's Services Council, the MOU that you adopted last year, and working with the Children's Services Council, and trying to address, as the county administrator mentioned, some of the most pressing issues that we know, that we know, we have foresight, that we know is coming down, and we know that those limited resources that we have right now will require us to be very methodical in how we, how we invest those limited resources.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I have a question, and I'll see if Commissioners have any. During that two-year cycle that you all are proposing, transitional period, what happens to entities after the two-year transitional period that have not received any funding from the Children's Services Council?
So agencies that can't apply for, you're talking about for the FY '26, then we would bring it in line to the board for that new two-year funding cycle, should it be required regarding the categories of how we would establish the categories for the following two-year funding cycle. But for this upcoming two-year funding cycle, the plan would be that we would have an opportunity in which agencies that are not eligible for Children's Services Council funding can apply through CHSP. But those that have the eligibility, which, which right now, the categories will be an area of early learning, summer youth, would apply through the Children's Services Council. And if they're not, if they, if they're not eligible to apply, then can apply through CHSP.
Okay, good, thank you for that. But I just want to clarify that. So during that two-year period, transitional period, they can come back to CHSP and make application. My question is, what happens after that two-year transitional period?
Well, after that two-year funding, transitional period, they can apply through the Children's Services Council for funding opportunities.
If they don't qualify, though, what happens?
If they're not eligible, if they don't qualify, if they don't qualify, it's because they're going, they've gone through the funding process through CSC. The question is, will there be a funding opportunity? If there's a funding opportunity for them to apply, then they can apply through Children's Services Council. If there isn't an opportunity for them to apply through Children's Services Council, then they can apply through CHSP.
After that two-year transitional period, so it continues then, for how long? What is the duration that they can continue to apply?
There's-
Through CHSP if they're not acceptable to the Children's Services Council?
Well, the Children's Services Council, when funding opportunities come available through the Children's Services Council, we would continue to work with those agencies so that way they have an opportunity to apply through the Children's Services Council. If there's not an opportunity, there are still other categories that's within CHSP that they may be able to apply to for funding.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Lammy. Commissioners? Commissioner Welch?
Thank you, Shinkton. I need some clarity on that, too.
Okay.
I think what we're trying to say is like, if they, I understand, you were trying to build some, a landing pad here for the folks who are funding is at risk. If, I think what the Chair, if you wouldn't mind, is suggesting is like, what happens if they don't get funding from CHSP or CSC in '25, '26, or '26? Whenever, whenever this transition period ends, the question is in what happens if they, if they would just not get funding? Or then, then you're saying they could come back to CHSP and we can try to fit them into a category that we have left?
What they'll be able to do is through CHSP, they can identify opportunities through CHSP that they can apply through the different categories that we would have realigned that would exist. And then what we would probably do, Commissioners, as part of recommendation, if that's something that we're seeing, we do have, we're creating this children and families category, and funding would, would be available where they could apply for those funding through that category.
Right, Madam Chair, ma'am.
Please.
So I do see that we're adding that seventh category, right?
Yes.
That children and family support, that's kind of like a safety net, if you will, if the agencies can't secure CSC funding in '26, or by '26.
If they, if they are not eligible to apply for CSC funding, if there's not a funding opportunity that exists.
Got you. Right, so by the next CHSP two-year cycle? So we're basically at the beginning of a CHSP two-year cycle, right?
Correct.
And what we're saying is, if you cannot get funding through the CSC in sometime in this next two-year CHSP cycle to supplement or replace the funding that we are potentially removing, then you can come back to CHSP under this seventh category of children and family support.
Well, it's not come back, so the, the issue is, do you have an opportunity to apply through Children's Services Council? If you have no opportunity to apply through Children's Services Council, then you go through the Children's Services Council. If there's not an opportunity to apply for Children's Services Council, then there's an, there would be opportunity with CHSP. However, it's, it's important to remember, though, as part of that process, though, that we would be working with those agencies to ensure that there's, they can apply, when there's an opportunity is available to Children's Services Council.
Right, so, Madam Chair, if I may?
Please.
Then, I feel like there's a lot of what ifs, and that's, I think, I think that's a part of the consternation, is we're being kind of hypothetical, and you're saying, yo, I got you. We will help you, we will walk you through this process, and they're going, I don't know, we're walking out into some traffic, right? And you're like, hold my hand, it'll be okay. So I think that might be where there's some concern, and I, and I trust you, you know I trust you, and I trust what we're trying to do here. You know, I'm just trying to get to the core of the concern, right? Because, yeah, I, as, as the previous item we discussed earlier, I'm trying to get to, everybody's here's well-intentioned, right? So we're trying, you guys have done a yeoman's job working with these folks, nine meetings, it's been like six, eight weeks. Mr. County Administrator, am I characterizing this right? If I'm wrong, tell me I'm 100% wrong.
No, I think you are, I may be able to simplify it. These agencies, over a two-year period of time, will have to transition to the CSC process to receive funding that, if they're eligible for the CH, for the CSC funding. That's the only way you create dollars in this process, to then go do other things if you decide to do it. So that's very straightforward. Do I think the agencies, have I seen the agencies transition to changes like this in the past and be able to adapt to new things? Do I think they'll be able to do that? Yeah, especially considering that's where the money is. And so, but we've said, in the meantime, if you're not eligible, so it may be best to say what's actually happening. Next year, or in the most, in the most, in the upcoming budget cycle, the CSC has said, we're going to fund summer youth and early learning. We say, great, under this proposal, so we won't fund those programs. We'll eliminate those categories, and summer youth and early learning, just those two, there's a bunch more in the first year. So for that, you have to apply over there. We're going to, we're going to make you apply for that over there, and, but if you don't get funded, if you're not eligible, we're going to give you one year to come back. And in that year, you're going to still be able to, if things didn't work out for you, you're still going to be able to apply for funding through CHSP. And in that year, us, the city and the county, of the city, the county, and, and the CSC are going to try to work to get you eligible. Whatever eligibility hurdles you're having trouble meeting, it's in our collective interest that you get eligible for that process. So we'll work with you over that period of time. But after that time, to address your question specifically, no, they'd have to become eligible for CHSP in those categories. And then the next year, we would eliminate further, we would further eliminate, under this proposal, again, just an option for the board, we would eliminate further categories that the CSC intends to fund. Again, to eliminate duplication and to eliminate even potential problems that the CSC could get into because there's statutory obligations related to this, and not creating duplicative funding cycles. So again, we're doing it in, in coordination, addressing all these issues. But yes, will that time clock run out, you know, over this time, at which, under this proposal, they'd have to become eligible for CSC? Yes. Unless, as Shinkton said, they're eligible for another funding category that's still available within the CHSP process, which, you know, most of the children's services will transition over that period of time to CSC.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. You have follow-up? Commissioner Welch?
Just to say, that makes it crystal clear. Right, thank you.
Commissioners, Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have similar questions, but I think I'll knock out the easy one first. The, the budget impact, just want to confirm, I understand this right. The budget impact is freeing up $23,000 in the fiscal year that we're about to start, and freeing up $416,000 in the next fiscal year after that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Of county dollars, not-
County dollars, yeah. Okay. If it seems like we're beating a dead horse, it's because it's important, it's an important horse. No offense to the trail riders. So I just want to make sure I understand, we're talking about transition, but it's very important, so I'm going to do like I'm doing a car deal, I want to see it in writing, step by step, okay? The plan as laid out in this item is that in early March, we expect the CSC to issue their requirements for people to apply, for agencies to apply.
We expect the CSC board to establish what the criteria will be for early learning funding.
Cool. And then the people who currently get CHSP that are at risk of falling off will get to look at those rules and will say, oh, it looks like I fit and I can apply, and I will apply. Or, no, I don't fit, and therefore the county's going to let me apply for another cycle of CHSP funding by the end of March.
We'll look at that to determine, working with the CSC, whether or not they, they're eligible for that process. And if they, it's determined they are eligible to that process, then they have to go to CSC and apply to CSC.
Okay, and then they apply. And then the CSC decides on a very competitive basis who doesn't, does not get awards. And let's say, some of these folks who met the rules and applied do not end up getting an award because they were not, in that case, on the CSC's grading scale, were not as competitive. When do they come back to the county to say, oh, I didn't get that funding? And when can they get funding back for the rest of the cycle?
They do not come back.
Okay, so I just want to be clear to everybody, we're not saying if you apply and don't get through, we'll help you. We're saying, if you can apply, good luck, and we hope you get it, and if you can't apply from the start, we'll help you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe.
And I'll add, because again, just like CHSP, CSC has a competitive process, funding is not guaranteed, guaranteed through CHSP or through the Children's Services Council process.
Thank you, Shinkton. Other Commissioners? Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am truly impressed with our county staff. I really am. And we have the most outstanding county administrator on planet Earth. You have to feel good when he's advised and shared with you and shown you the light. And since my conversation with our county administrator, the illumined thoughts of senior human service providers and leaders have come into the dais and have somewhat clouded the very clear vision and the efficiencies of method that the county administrator said that this would work. I appreciate you, I bet you're working with me through the challenges of slowness and and all like that. I appreciate you just spending time with me to help. And I know that we're trying to reach these models of efficiency. And one of the things that, over time, I've observed is that our county will centralize our streamlined things such as the points that we talked about earlier. One such occasion was to allow the people from the Greenway to maintain a democratic process that they could elect the leadership of the Greenway. We have streamlined procurement categories like MW, WMBE, and anywhere we can streamline, we've done everything but merge with the city, you know what I'm saying? But I believe that models of efficiency, business models that work well and perfect are one thing. But what I'm hearing, and no one wants to argue against these Harvard models of business efficiency, and that's what we do, perfect models, but the cultural competencies can't be modeled, that don't fit in a model. What it takes to reach the neglected, the rejected, the neglected, all of that. And what we've heard from tonight is as talented a galaxy of superstars who do human services in this community, and there is no final collective, no finer collective of talented, exquisite providers than we've heard from. And they've said, slow down. They said, mm-mm. And I'm willing to listen to them. I'm willing to listen to them over the credentials, over the awards and the certificates of my own staff, because over the years, social agencies have been made to duke it out, and as Shinkton's just said, extremely competitive process. But there is nothing competitive for Sheriff Walt MacNeil to come in here and say, I need $5 million. And we barely scratch on a sheet of paper or ask him really why. And I said yesterday to us, that's just an agency that just can get money and never compete, just say, I want some. But over the years, we have dragged social agencies by their ankles. Ms. Addy gave us a chronology of '96, '98, we evolved to there. Even in the application for the CHSP, there were agencies that were very efficient in the field, but inefficient in the paperwork and applying and the application. They fell off the wagon because some didn't have computers, some didn't know where the spreadsheet was in these formal words. But dealing one-on-one in the crisis of, of human engagement, they're very good. But fitting the forms that Shinkton has for them to fill out and all, like, what is this? The other component of which I'm listening to tonight, Vince, is that CHSP is about 25 years old, and a process and an administrative agency which has a life of its own of 25 years old, we're seeking to transfer to an agency, the CSC, which is about two years old. And in that two-year period, their grounding, their mission, their vision, these things are being crystallized, as well as their processes. And this is a lot of additional weight. And I've asked the county's attorney, does this even fit under the statutory guidelines with which they could assume this new work? Not only do I think that the CSC is very young and youthful in finding its own legs, if you will, but to dump a 25-year-old agency with all of the suitcases and baggages and the people and how they talk and how they come at you and the nuances of what they're really saying, they know these folk, they know. CSC does not, doesn't have a history or legacy long enough. Now, if you asked and said to me, can we place the CSC under the umbrella of the CHSP, I would say their season, their experience, they could definitely assume leadership over CSC's dollars, may not have statutory, but they could do it. But you're asking tonight that we ponder, can the two-year-old organization accept the responsibilities that have, over time, have their own tributaries and meandering pathways, a history that is not easily given to CSC? I'm not comfortable placing that weight on them. As important, Madam Chair, you more specifically are aware that this summer, when the opportunity was there for you, the board of the CSC to accept the 13% increases as opposed to receiving new money and new programs for the poor children of our community, the CSC board said, whoa, hold up, we, we don't, we don't quite, we ain't there, we'll hold up where we are. And they did, and they voted to roll back the millage rate. The city didn't roll back, but we're quite a old city, 200 years. The county didn't roll back. The county didn't roll back. The county's 200 as well. School board didn't roll back, they're 100. But CSC rolled back the millage and refused new monies to help poor children. Those are the facts. It's a precedent. But six months later, I'm to be persuaded that monies that rightfully come to them and if not next, out on their millage capacities, but they refused it. Why would they want some new money now? What additional burden, which is even some of it, is not synchronized with its activities and functions. But in six months' time, there's a new charge, a new desire to receive new monies, and they didn't receive the monies that they could have received? I can't reconcile that in good conscience. So tonight, I'm persuaded by people I've respected, the names that you've heard over the years. And it's not just because they are good fighters. It's just that they are good writers. And they are, their hearts have been on the line. Their commitment in the trenches has been there. Everybody who has come up here tonight to speak in the interest of the human services is, if you could give them a military ranking, would be a four-star general, something like that. The status quo sometimes, Shinkton, is not harmful. And we're not just moving parts to move part, but we're dealing with the most sensitive element of our community. Poor people, homeless people, little children, I counted 50 children, 50 blue shirts in here, who said, I could be effective. Why? Because their names, they would slip through the crack, that they would not come immediately for secure, protected monies. I heard, Miss Casey, plead, 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 don't, these are they. And I can't look at those kids and roll dice. I'm not going to roll the dice of what's possible, that you just don't gamble that away. So maybe commissioners, the sheriff could get any kind of money he wanted, anything he want, period. But human services don't get that opportunity. Human services just don't get it. They do have to fight. It is competitive. There's always fighting over crumbs. And I appreciate Allen, because I said that we do not spend at least 1% of our total budget on human services. And Allen Rosenwag, late in the year, indicated that we do spend a percentage greater than 1% and probably greater than 2%. So I appreciate it being corrected in that regard. But I am hopeful that tonight, we can find a reason to pause. And I'm not interested in modeling business efficiency over what I know is cultural competency. And right now, food prices are up, gas is fluctuating crazy, people, it's hard. Homelessness is happening for a reason, it's hard. Children are missing in school. Absenteeism is great, it's hard. This is not the moment to gamble, talking about how it's going to fit and pair up, blah, 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 blah. And then we had the CHSP process, and I'm, and you, in a shorter memory, it don't take you back as far back, but you had to qualify. And if you didn't qualify, those initial years, you had to get sanctioned by some entity to apply, to be considered. And before then, everybody came in this room and broke them off some money and just tried to give everybody some. And usually, everybody got some. When we came before the county commission, and we went to the CHSP with the city, and it hasn't gotten, where's the windfall? Now, the CHSP has to fight for every dollar. And we want to place those people under the Children's Services Council, which turns down dollars. I can't reconcile. So I love everybody in their respective places of what they do. But right now, measuring the entities who are giving the services, the processes that we have in place, and what we're trying to foster in amalgamation, a bond, a unit, and you'd want this to be organic, but this right here is not an organic parent in my eyes. So I'm asking, Madam Chair, that we time out, pull the cord, and maintain status quo for now. And the ask of the community is additional study, additional review. And because of the competencies of who's asking, if they was fluff, wouldn't pay them no mind. If they didn't have the track record and years of service, wouldn't pay them no mind. If they were not all that they represent as all-stars, wouldn't pay them no mind. But we can ill afford to ignore the pleas of these decorated veterans of human services and the wars for people's lives. And I'm asking us tonight to slow the train down and let's listen to this element. They're deserving, they are competent. And that's not to say that we're not perfect, because we are, we're very perfect, except for when we're not. And but otherwise, we're quite perfect. So I'm asking us commissioners with a motion that we would, we would pause this and allow for continued dialogue, deliberation, and the sharpening of pencils to get a process that's really going to be tightened, right? And one that, you know, and I also confess this right here, I honestly thought that we were all going to sing kumbaya and was all on the same page of music. But with what I've heard tonight from the community, I'm willing to take a second look and slow the train down.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Is there a second? Thank you. Any other discussion? Uh, Commissioner O'Keefe?
Hey, Madam Chair. So the thing I like, I think we ought to keep in mind is that, one, I am sorry that we have allowed a rushed decision to continue to come in such a way that most of our community service providers who spent all day today providing services for the neediest in our community and have to do it again tomorrow with limited resources, need to spend their evening advocating to continue what we've existing done. Especially feel bad that we had to, that we made it such that, I'm sure those kids loved coming here, but I'm also sure, I prefer that they'd have better things to do if we didn't put all the organizations in this situation over next year's budget, over $23,000. Keep that in mind, keep that number in mind, is what we're talking about for next year is $23,000. We're not talking about 400 until two years from now. I appreciate we do need to do no harm. And I've been in, I've worked in the nonprofit sector before, and what we're asking them is to completely change what they're going to apply for, for key funding, that they not only get from us, but we heard get triple match from the feds, that would be at risk that we get from the feds in our community because we match these. In a few weeks, they would get the new rules 60 days from now, and they have a few weeks to change what their applications is. And that may sound like plenty of time, but in the nonprofit grant world, that is, this is whatever this is, a snap of a finger, that is not enough time, over $23,000. The, and we ought not, and we, I don't think we are going the direction of making organizations fight each other for, if it's not homeless, it's not here. The other thing is, we, what I've heard is that we jeopardize, eventually, theoretically, eventually, people will get their funding back, but will their doors stay open until then? And we have made some progress. Why would we jeopardize what precious project, progress we have made for our kids and families in our community this year and rush it over $23,000? And so the reason I keep harping on that is, is I like the motion here, what I would have argued for is some specificity in the sense of, if we're going to shut this down, let's shut it down. And personally, what I think is, we risk, and I love that we would not move forward this, but also if we keep deferring, we add more uncertainty. And so what I want us to think about, and I'm going to try to read the faces, is the categories that we're talking about cutting out, allow them to have a one-year CHP cycle, meaning normal rules, no changes, and instead of two years for those categories, it is one year, which is only impacting us by $23,000. And any changes that we want to make to the process be brought to the board by September so that we can give certainty on changes six months ahead of when changes need to be made. I know it's very specific, but my goal here is to find a compromise that gets where we need to go without risking services this year over what is relatively small amount of money and allows us to get where we're going. And so I'm going to listen to the comments from the other commissioners and see where we end up in changing anything. But the keys, I would like to argue, is give the, these categories one year, as is, no ifs, ands, or do you qualify? And set any changes for the future to be done by fall for next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner Maddox?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. Um, Madam Attorney, do I have a conflict?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You previously, when this agenda item came up, recused for the appearance of a conflict, given your employment.
Yes, ma'am. Say no more. Madam Chair, I recuse myself for the appearance of a conflict, given my employment with family problems with Big Ben. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Let me just sort of weigh in on this issue, recognizing that I'm also on the board of the Children's Services Council. First of all, I'd just like to thank all of the directors of the various agencies and representatives of the various entities that provide direct services to our children and to our families. I mean, the services that you all have provided over the years, it are invaluable. And I do not want to see any lapse in any of those services, because who would ultimately suffer would be our children and our families. So I appreciate you all coming, speaking to the commission today. And I appreciate Mr. Lammy, representatives from the city, and the Children's Services Council, all the work that you all have done to this point. But I think even given that, with all the work and analysis that has been done, there's a lot of uncertainty. And that uncertainty, it goes across service provider lines, I think it would impact our families, it would impact our children. I appreciate the service providers that, that met with various of us in person and virtually to discuss the impact that changing in the funding would have on the programs. And that impact would funnel down, would have a ripple effect to the point where one agency director told me, if we lose funding, we'll lose positions. If we lose positions, we won't be able to service families with children. The parents will lose their job because they won't have subsidy for daycare. If the parents lose their jobs, then they can't pay their rent, can't take care of the families. And the one thing that we are trying to free up money for, to address homeless issues and other issues in the community, we could be creating, increasing the homeless population from, from the ripple effect. And I was impressed by a couple of speakers tonight that pointed out, I think it was Kids Incorporated, Ms. Countryman, that says, we, we leveraged $120,000 to draw down about a half a million dollars. And then another speaker indicated, you know, we don't get very much from CHSP process, but we use, we've used that to draw down close to a half a million dollars. I think that's commendable, that's remarkable. And when I talked about uncertainty, I don't want to see any of these entities lose funding because not only would they lose the amount that they get presently received from CHSP, but they would lose the ability to leverage that money and draw down from federal sources and other, other grant, grant sources as well. I'm not opposed to slowing this down. I mean, this is, this is drastic. With those 22 categories, we have so many more entities that provide direct services to our children. And the impact is just great without more, without more certainty, or Shinkton. I just think we need more certainty. Our service providers need to know that if the CHSP process is going to be changed and they are going to be required to the Children's Services Council, I need, I think they need some certainty about whether or not the criteria that the Children's Services Council will be applying is the criteria they can address. Being a member of the Children's Services Council, I can tell you, historically, that when we've had requests for proposal, invitation to bid, probably more than 50% of the applicants are not funded. And I can almost guarantee you with the process that we utilize right now, any of these service providers are prior for funding, it's very likely that more than 50% would not receive Which employs me to think about what would happen to those entities that are providing direct services for our children, for our families, what would be the impact on them? Now, we talk about children and families, but I think we also have to look at the entities that provide services, because they would likely have to lay off some of their employees as well. So I think the impact is a lot greater than what, what we can imagine. But I think it's reality. It could happen without some type certainty. And I recognize, Shinkton, that, that we are trying to maximize funds, free up funds so that we can address other areas. But I just think we need to be a lot more deliberate about, number one, the impact, and number two, what will happen on the Children's Services Council side once those agencies are told after this two-years transition, you got to get funding from, from the Children's Services Council. Now, what, what I would like to see... what I would like to see is, number one, this group that represents the city, the county, and the Children's Services Council, continue to collaborate, meet, but let the agencies know what will happen once they are thrust to the Children's Services Council. Now, I believe this whole process came about because of the funding mechanism. And I agree, the Children's Services Council does receive, you know, funding directly from taxpayers pursuant to, to the village rate. So it is a greater part of money probably than the county, well, I know, than, than the county appropriates. So I don't have a problem with that. My problem is, once it gets there, what is the process? So what I would like to see, and it's probably in conjunction with Commissioner Proctor, Commissioner O'Keefe, I would like to see the committee continue to work, come up with a proposal to be submitted to the Children's Services Council, or the Children's Services Council to agree or, or disagree. Also, keep in mind that we have vacancies on the Children's Services Council. It is a 10-person board. Five members are appointed by the governor. We have a member from the school board, from this board. We have a member that, that sits on the school board and appointees from the Department of, of Children and Families and appoint, appointees from the court system. So we're all diverse. We're all strong-minded. We have, we have our own opinions. But I believe, Ashington, that you all can come up with a proposal, load it to the Children's Services Council. Once we have a full board, and I think tonight, hopefully, we will be sending some names to, to the governor. So I think we could take this year to take our time, slow it down, and make sure none of these service providers fall through the cracks. Now, the CHSP process, you presented to us a couple of sessions ago. I believe you all created some metrics for measuring, for seeing if the needles are being moved by the service providers. So I think we could take those measurement, metrics. CHSP process, like Commissioner Proctor said, is not broken. I don't see why, depending on legal analysis, and we have our own legal counsel at the Children's Services Council. But I don't see why the amount of funds that are allocated down for these categories that are being recommended to be taken away, I don't see why the Children's Services Council could not carve out those same amount of funds, utilize a CHSP process that is not broken for analysis with the Children's Services Council. And of course, pursuant to statute, the council might require some enhancement on the services that are being provided. And I know the service providers could do that. They could go to the, through the process. They could show that with CSC funds, there is enhancement to what they have traditionally provided to our children and our families. But my point is, if the process is not broken, why not take it to the Children's Services Council? Why reinvent the wheel, if it's legally possible? Okay? And let's say hypothetically, we're looking at a million and a half. I'm not sure what the total funding cycle would be. If the Children's Services Council is receiving between eight and nine million dollars, why can't we carve out a million and a half for these entities previously serviced by CHSP? Use that same process, require some enhanced service provision, carve it out. That would leave six, seven million, five, six million for the Children's Services Council to continue our mandate. And what we, what we've recently decided to do is to focus on early learning, to focus on school readiness so that our third-grade students can pass the test. There are certain areas in the county, certain zip codes in the county, the third-grade readiness scores in those certain areas. It is just a drastic difference from the overall, I guess, population of Leon County, of the, of the zip code. So we agreed to focus in on those areas. That would leave enough funds for the Children's Services Council to direct specific funding on school readiness. Okay? And, and I guess my point is, why reinvent the wheel? Even though it's a different agency, we could employ the same process. We could have the same, same type committee. We could have these agencies go through that same structure. But I, as a member of this board and as a member of the Children's Services Council, do not want to chance it on any of these entities losing funding because the ability to leverage is taken away. And of course, all the other ripple effects and impacts, in my opinion, you know, would, would be taken, taken away. So I guess to piggyback Commissioner O'Keefe and Commissioner Proctor, I would like for the committee to continue, bring back a proposal, because I want to know, when this goes to the Children's Services Council, I want to know that these 22 categories and these other agencies that provide services, I want to know that they're going to be treated fairly, that they are going to be treated with a process unsimilar to the process they have been familiar with over the last few years. And I want to make sure that the services to our children continues because that's what this is about. Services for our children and for our families. And I think if we don't take it to that logical conclusion, it's too much uncertainty. With me, it's too much uncertainty right now. And so that's, and I'm not making a motion. I'm just throwing that out there for, for consideration. And I would hope, commissioners, that you would give me some deference as your representative on the Children's Services, Children's Services Council. And if a proposal is taken to the council, you know, we could tweak it, what have you, if it's, if it falls within the ambit of the law that was passed. But I'm just, at this point, I'm, I'm not ready to rubber stamp it. It's too much uncertainty for my groups in this community, Boys and Girls Club, all the other agencies that provide those services to our children. Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That was really well said, Madam Chair. Very compelling. And as I were designated to the Children's Services Council, I think it's particularly poignant of you to offer that suggestion, which really challenges my, my comments on this because I was, I'm really prepared to be the contrarian right now. And here's why. I think that, number one, I think what we're doing is in good faith. And if you look at it from a big-picture perspective, this community has voted to designate a specific pot of money targeted specifically at these issues. And we are trying to be efficient in how we dole out our dollars specifically as it relates to children's services, but in also other needs that we have. I get the uncertainty, but I feel like we are delaying the inevitable here. At some point, we are going to have to transition the children's services provided through CHSP to the CSC because it's my understanding that there is a significant duplication problem and that the CSC funds cannot be duplicated in other ways. And I, and I know there are watchdogs out there. There are people who are just chomping at the bit to find that duplication, which then threatens that funding. And whether that duplication is coming from the CSC to the CHSP programs or the CHSP programs back to the CSC, there's going to be duplication. So at some point, we're going to have to do this. And so I was going to say, I, I can't vote for this motion. Are we on option two? Is that correct? Do not accept that, just if I'm clear? Has there been a motion made?
Yeah.
Yeah, was it for option two?
I don't believe we have a motion.
I think we do have a motion.
To table it.
Do not. It was for option two, yeah. And that's the do not authorize. So I really am leaning towards option one and just go ahead and, like ripping the Band-Aid off, so to speak. Because I feel like it's going to become, we're just doing it slowly. Now, to Commissioner O'Keefe's concerns earlier, and I could be completely wrong about this, and this is where I'll need some help from staff. It's my understanding that we are sort of extending for a year. We're not extend, we're not giving like some runway here for a year?
We haven't accepted anything yet.
And, and that doesn't encourage me.
Hold on, hold on one second.
Option one does not accomplish, like, a little bit of grace for a year? I thought, that was my understanding, is that option one provided like a year of grace.
Two-year, two-year transitional period.
Yes, it does give a year for those agencies that would not be eligible for Children's Services Council funding to apply through CHSP.
Right, and that, that, that is now. That application is happening now, right?
Yes, it'll open in March.
So I assume all the, so hypothetically, all the people who are, want this funding through CHSP, expect this funding, are going to apply for it through the normal process. They'll probably get awarded the money potentially. And they have a year then to try and transition over to the CSC, where if they don't get the funding at the CSC, we will keep them on another year on CHSP. And at that point, then we're going to have some rubber meat in the road, right? And so that's my understanding. And so is, I feel like there's some confusion because Commissioner O'Keefe is shaking his head and
No.
Ashington's nodding his head. So I want to make sure that's clear because I don't want to leave anybody without a parachute. I think the problem is, we're falling. The parachute's been carefully packed, and everybody's scared to pull the string. And at some point, the ground is approaching. And that's the way I think about this. So I feel like we would be best served just moving on down the road. And then I think it's been made very clear amongst these commissioners and amongst our staff and amongst every stakeholder that we don't want anybody falling through the cracks. We don't want anybody losing funding. We don't want anybody losing matches that are drawn down federal dollars. So that's my concern. Now, I say all that to say, if, and I don't know how to craft this, and Commissioner Maddox ain't, ain't in the game right now. He's good at this. To craft something, a motion to the effect of what you asked for, and I would do that just out of deference for you, Madam Chair, if we could craft a motion that effectively says what Chair Cummings has suggested, which is, give staff direction to find a way to just really and truly transition the CHSP funding over to the CSC if it's possible. I think there are some significant concerns about whether it is statutorily possible to do that. I don't know. But other than a very clearly lined motion into that effect, to what you were asking for, I'm going to have to not support option two that's on the table.
Yes, for clarification, Commissioner Welch, since we met the last time, our general counsel for the Children's Services Council did render a legal opinion. And his opinion was to the extent that if the county withdrew funding to the CHSP process with the, with the city, if that funding is withdrawn, and we, we know, as the county administrator has indicated, that's a policy decision from this county. But if we withdraw the funding, then it is legal for the Children's Services Council to provide funding to those agencies that no longer receive funding from the CHSP process. Now, my question that I raised, and I said, we might need a legal opinion about it from our CSC general counsel, is whether or not we can carve out from the $89 million that the Children's Services Council receives every year, if we can carve out the same dollar amount that we're talking about taking from the CHSP process and place it under the Children's Services Council and utilize that same, a similar process that the CHSP process does to evaluate the proposals and determine the amount of funding. Now, that's what I'm saying we'll probably need a legal to, to look at. But I think if we did it that way, that would still leave enough money with the council to, to focus on the areas that we want to focus on.
So, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, on point?
One second.
Madam Chair, on point?
Commissioner Maddox, I'll be quick, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. No worries.
Madam Chair, what do you think is the, oh, let me wait a minute.
I'm sorry.
Well, that's okay. What do you think may be the best way to accomplish that? Just a delay or a, just a vote on number two here and just not do this? We need to give some policy direction, I think, to the county administrator. So I want to make sure that we are in the right posture to do that. So, I mean, I'm willing to make a substitute motion to ask our staff to work with the CSCs.
And the city, absolutely.
And the city, and, and all the stakeholders get a legal opinion about whether we can do that. I feel like we kind of had this conversation in November, and we maybe didn't get that far.
But I, I don't think getting a legal opinion should be part of the, should be part of the motion. I think if we need a legal opinion, the council can receive that without a motion.
The CSC council?
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, then that still begs the question, how do we proceed with this agenda item if we just have, we have board direction? Again, I'm not, I'm not really wanting to do the number two, do not authorize county administrator to approve, execute, so.
Well, let, let me say this, my vice chair. I would, I would like to entertain a motion that the committee continues to work, but works specifically, so specifically on the process that the Children's Services Council would utilize to service these entities that will no longer be eligible for USPS funding. Okay? Including the specifics, whether or not that funding can be carved out from the Children's Services Council to deal specifically with these entities that are providing direct services, they would probably have to show some enhancement pursuant to the statute. But whether or not we could utilize that same process with the Children's Services Council, which would, like I say, leave several million to address the issues that we on the council have, have indicated are very important to us in Leon County.
Point of information, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
If I may ask the county attorney a question. Madam County Attorney, the Children's Services Council, and, and a lot of light comments offered by Chair, but they have a staff, they have an attorney, a board, they have taxing authority. And the county utilized Ashington to draft and do the work of the Children's Services Council? Or is it the Children's Services Council on initiative and staff and lawyer that comes up with that process to achieve how they would accommodate the, the CHSP? I'm just asking a technical question. Should my employee do that, or should Children's Services employee do that?
Well, it could be either one. The board could direct Ashington as county staff to collaborate and work with CSC staff to develop a proposal to take to the CSC. Or, or the CSC board would have to direct its staff to undertake that work. But that's not, that's of course something the CSC board would have to do.
We, we can't control or say anything to the board.
Correct, right, or, or their staff, so.
And may I say, interject this to Commissioner Proctor and Madam Attorney? We've got a memorandum of understanding that includes the city, the county, and the CSC, where they've agreed, we've agreed to work together on funding, services, what have you. So the way I see this is part, just ongoing, part of the memorandum of understanding. I don't think that committee would be directing the Children's Services Council to do anything any more than the committee's coming before us tonight. any more than the committee's coming before us tonight. But I think we have got, we can't just do part and just throw it and not make sure we've got a logical conclusion for the entire process. So that committee is made up of the CSC, the city, and the county. Okay? So I think the three, those entities could come together with the proposal, because I don't think it's right, it's not fair for our service providers to be uncertain about their future, uncertain about who they're going to service, even uncertain about their employees in their agencies. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to weigh in. If you, I love what you said. Some issues you address and you see, not with your eyeballs, but you see with your heart. This is one of those issues that really, you've tugged on our heartstrings in your passion. And this is a heart issue, in part, as much as a head issue. And I love the idea of the pilot project, a dry run, that there is no gamble, and that we mirror the recommendations and the suggestions coming from our staff to do, but so that there's no risk and no gamble, carve out that amount of money that the Children's Services could do for the pilot project specifically working with, and in that way, there is no gamble. I like that. The flip side of that is, the CSC has the authority to take all of the debt of the currency SC, and they have millage space, they have credit on there, they have spending on their credit card, and they could accommodate it if they're willing to lift that millage and accommodate all of that, and that guarantees no loss, no gamble. And if we put the millage rate in part of the study, ought to include looking at what would the CSC's millage increase look like if we were able to accommodate? So when we pull the plug on funding from up here, the city pulls the plug, the taxpayers, we're not double dipping, the taxpayers are thus paying for continuing to, and we've got everybody under safety umbrella, if we can get the Children's Council Board to look at what that number, hard number would be, and for the millage rate to go up, we pull the plug, but everybody remains safe. Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Maddox.
Madam Attorney, am I allowed to participate in discussion?
The prohibition against engaging in discussion when you recuse prohibits discussion when you're an appointed official. The general rule is even if an elected official recuses, the elected official, absent some very specific circumstances, can engage in discussion. So yes, you, Commissioner Maddox, can engage in discussion on this matter if you choose to.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Do you like to weigh in?
Yes, ma'am, I don't have, really, what I want to try to do here is try to bring together all the comments to see if I could help Commissioner Welch there with where he's trying to get to. It sounds like to me that no one on the commission, as it sits right now, is really comfortable with the way things sit and uncertainty of how things are going to work for those organizations that probably or likely may not be funded, even though we have that pot of money that's the new, that's the new proposed bucket, that would be the children and families bucket that Shinkton talked about. The question is, and Madam Chair, I think you articulated well, Commissioner Proctor, I think you articulated well, as well, I think the question is not, it's more of how long, we want to work through this thing in a way that at the end, there's more certainty there for the governments involved, as well as for the organizations involved. And so, Madam Chair, you talked about the county, the city, and the CSC working together to come up with a process that everybody kind of understands who's on first. Is that kind of where you were on that?
Absolutely. I'm concerned about certainty for everybody.
Right, right, right. And so, and so there will be no certainty until that conversation happens. I think now, since everybody's on that page and wanting that kind of certainty, and I think even Commissioner Welch expressed some kind of hesitancy, because he wants that kind of certainty too, I think the question now is not where we're going, where we're going, but how long we're going to give staff and organizations to get there. So is it going to be, are we going to continue with the same, the same cycle for the next two years, and that span of time required that CSC and the governments work together to come up with something that accommodates, something that everybody's comfortable with? Or are we going to give it six months? Or are we going to give it a year? But I think, I think the thing we have to figure out is, what's going to happen, and what's that time threshold between right now and the new CHSP cycle? Because that's what the organizations who spoke today are concerned about. They're concerned about, when the CHSP cycle happens, am I going to be able to apply for CHSP money? And if I don't, if I don't apply, if I am not able to apply, and I apply to the CSC, I need a certain way to know that all the children that I'm serving is going to be able to be served, and all the staff that I'm using to serve those children are going to be able to stay with me. So, Commissioner Welch, I think it's either we keep the same two-year cycle, and within that, within that timing, we get staff, city, county, CSC to work together to bring back a process within the next two years that we can agree upon, that makes us, makes everybody comfortable, well, I won't say everybody. Let me too say that, no matter how we draw this thing, somebody's going to end up uncomfortable. There's no way that we get out of this and everybody is hooray comfortable. It's going to be, it's going to be uncomfortable because it's changed. But we can create something to where at least there's some certainty there, that at least the board members feel like they're voting on something, they're certain as to how things are going to work out again. So it's more, right now, I think we're just talking about a timing threshold, and if we're going to keep the same cycle, if we're going to go, I think Commissioner O'Keefe said, I think, I think he talked about maybe a one-year cycle, Commissioner O'Keefe, I think, we can keep it the same for one year, we can keep it the same for two years, what does that look like? That's where we are right now. Because I don't think anybody, like, we talk about ripping the Band-Aid off, even though I think you want to, Commissioner Welch, I still don't, it still didn't sound like to me that you were totally comfortable with it without knowing on the back end that everybody was on the same page as to what's going to happen to those organizations that cannot apply, is going to lose funding. So, Madam Chair, I just kind of wanted to see if I was at least bringing that all together to see if we can get to a place where everybody's comfortable with the way, well, the commissioners are comfortable with the way that we're going to move forward with this vote. Because I think we all want to be on the same page on this thing.
Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Mr. County Administrator, you have a comment on this?
Madam Chair, just, I just want to speak to the technical nature of the, of the motion that you sort of articulated, not value statement related to it or anything like that. The, and again, as we said at the beginning, as I said at the very beginning, this is just an option for the board. You decide whether to take it, not take it, you decide when to take it, if you want to take it or not. Any of those, any of that direction works for us. But with respect to the motion that you sort of framed out there, Madam Chair, which would be for us, and again, perfectly understandable motion for us, as county staff would get the direction to work with our partners at the CSC and the city of Tallahassee, to go to the CSC and propose to them to basically replicate our process and fund it for those agencies. We can do that. And the board and the CSC can act on that. And they can act on it for this budget cycle, or they can act on it for the next one. We lose a little bit of the, of how we determine the, you know, the timing of that. So again, the CSC could decide they wanted to do it now, or we could sort of, if the CSC, since we don't control the amount of time they take to make that decision, it could be that we drift into the next, the next cycle, in which case, we could act on it then. But we, technically, I understand the motion, and certainly you could give us the direction if that was the will of the board, to go propose such a thing.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Commissioner Kavon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. But we keep having conversations about the CSC and Children's Services Council, and they're in the room. The executive director is sitting over there. Would it be okay if?
No, I don't think that would be appropriate at this time.
Okay.
Because we're talking about board, it would take board action.
Okay.
Yeah, the proposal would take board action.
Okay.
And I don't want to put Executive Director on the spot.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I think she, I think she wants to speak.
No.
Okay.
How you knew that?
I walked over.
What you go?
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Did I see your hand now? Commissioner Welch?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
You go ahead, I'm collecting myself.
I was going to try and make a motion, Madam Chair.
Substitute motion.
Substitute motion for board direction to do what Vince said. Ask our staff to work with all aspects of the MOU to develop a transition of CHSP funding over to CSC, and let the CSC try to figure that out over the next CHSP cycle of two years. Is that, is that?
I'm not sure if we need to do a time limit, just allow them to accept it or not.
Okay, so then that would be the motion, to direct our staff to work with the city, the CSC, and obviously representing the county, to find a way to transition the CHSP over to the CSC in terms of children's services.
Without a time cap.
And bring it back, yeah.
Madam Chair, I withdraw my motion, and I agree to support Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, what happens?
Hold on one second. Commissioner Maddox, hold on one second, Mr. County Administrator.
Just for clarification, to be clear, that's exactly what we've done in this item. And so, again, if the issue was to take your proposal, which was to ask the CSC to replicate our process, again, so what I heard was to ensure that the agencies have, not only the funding, but then again, and all I'm suggesting there is, it's just a little bit more direction that you could provide to us to say, rather than to say transition these services, because that's exactly what we've tried to do to this point. But if you, if you want us to make a proposal to the CSC to replicate our process and to fund it, we can, we can do that. And I was just seeking a little bit more clarification.
Either that or an acceptable proposal.
Direct staff to work with the CSC then to replicate our funding for CHSP.
Or accept any other, you know, proposal. I don't think we should be relegated to that, but I think that would be a good option.
Okay.
Thank you. You still second Commissioner Proctor?
If there's no timetable.
Okay, so we didn't intitate a timetable. Discussion, Commissioner Kavon, you wanted to say?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will not be supporting the motion. I, I'm not comfortable, I would like to meet with the Children's Services Council and see how this affects them, since they're going to be adopting our process. They have their own process, they're their own taxing authority, they're their own body. I don't think it's our right or duty to give them direction on what to do, so I will be not supporting the motion.
Okay. And just for clarification, that will be part of the overall, overall process. We're not saying give them, telling them what to do. We're saying part of the MOU is for all these agencies to work together on funding, programming, so they will be working with the CSC. And of course, any proposal would have to go to the full body for acceptance or not. Okay? So it's not saying tell them what to do, it's proposal. So it might be one or two proposals on the funding process. But, but I think in the final analysis, what we want, what I want, is some certainty as far as these agencies that are being taken away from the CHSP process. Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, don't forget about me.
Commissioner Maddox?
I'll go after you.
Okay, I'll come to you after Commissioner O'Keefe, okay? Hold tight. Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I want to give certainty for this application that we are talking about that would be due in March, that's 60 days away, and I hate to kick the can to not make clear to these organizations, and so I'm going to offer this substitute motion in that interest, and then zip it, see where it goes. I'm offering a substitute motion that we keep our, all our categories the same for this cycle, that we, that we keep all the categories the same for the cycle, no change, period.
And I think they'll be the same if we don't vote for change. Am I right, Mr. County Administrator? If we don't change, they're going to remain the same, right?
This motion puts this whole discussion to bed, though.
If we don't accept it tonight, it's going to stay the same, it's not going to be any changes.
Correct. That's the, that's substitute motion I make is, is keep the same, do not accept this.
Okay, and I, do you accept that?
Can we augment that?
To your motion, yeah.
Can you augment that?
To your motion, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. For clarification, thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Awesome.
Disentente.
We accept amendment. Commissioner Maddox?
No, I had the same question Commissioner O'Keefe did about, but I did have a follow-up question. So if we're keeping it the same, is that for another two-year cycle? That's the question I have, because the application's coming up in March for a two-year cycle, is it not?
Absolutely.
Okay. So basically, we're saying we're going to keep CHSP the same for the next two years. In the meantime, staff will work with the CSC and the city to see if we can come up with something that everybody can agree upon. And then at that point, after the two-year cycle is over, would the transition look to happen then, Madam Chair?
Absolutely. That's my understanding. Commissioners?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Okay, all those, Commissioner Proctor?
Madam Attorney, I have a question. Is there a, some kind of mandate that we're under to transition CHSP under the Children's Services Council? Is there some state statute? What's, what, is there a legal mandate that we do something?
No.
So we have no county ordinance that makes us take CHSP and succumb to CSC?
No.
Okay. So we really don't have a timetable specific, it's just something that we ourselves have postured, that two years, one year right now, it's self-generated from ourselves. Is that what we're?
Yes.
That's right.
Okay. So if we don't, so if we don't do anything at all, we would not violate an ordinance, we wouldn't violate a state statute, and we wouldn't violate the county's MOU?
No.
We wouldn't?
No.
Okay. Takes the pressure off. So the recommendation that has no timeline is not constricted to two years or three nor Looking at that memorandum of understanding that you referenced, Madam Chair, and one of the things that's missing here, of which Commissioner Kavon, I think, was rightfully needing and wanting to hear, we have no letter, we have no action from the CSC board stating their readiness, their willingness, or their capability of doing the work which we're, us, the city and the county, is packing on to their backs. Absent seeing something in writing, I got a MOU here, and all the right words are there, but it seems like from the wording of it, that we're going to make a pack mule of the CSC. And one of the things that, when you look at the audit, the records, and the records retention, that this MOU requires to permit persons duly authorized by the city or county to have full access to and the right to examine any of the CSC's records and documents related to this MOU, regardless of the form in which kept, at all reasonable times, for as long as those records are taken. There's no doubt that we view the CSC as the little sister here, and there is no reciprocal comment of the CSC having the right to access of all forms of record-keeping, be it your notes, be it your notes, what have you. And I clearly see that the nature of the auditing, the record-keeping, the records retention, the CSC, this is going to be significant burden, as well as all of the applications and all of the, I said, the suitcases that these agencies bring. and all of the dis, I said the suitcases that these agencies bring, all the suitcases, is gonna come under the record-keeping and where they are compelled by agreement to be responsive to the city and the county when we demand to see that. And that, that, that is not a reciprocal task that, that, that either the CSC has or our agencies. Without.
But the only thing here is these are public records too, so.
I, I realize that.
Right.
But we've spelled them out to be available and ready to us under number, under five C, that right there. I like the point that, I really love the point, Madam Chair. I would love to see if the CSC would take that amount of money that you suggested for a pilot program, and if they could lock into that amount and come up with some other memorandum and say that our organizations would be taken care of in that way, no gamble. I like that. But as articulated previously, the other aspect is for the CSC to say and state an open and willingness to raise the millage rate to come up. So you, you threaded the needle, you found the solution. We got, we can find was 1.9, 1.6 million that we can designate it for CSC and assuming the responsibility for CSC, or we can commit to raising that through a millage. Until I hear from the CSC, their board, and right now I'm not sure that they've reacted at all, it's definitely premature on our parts to assert this kind of burden. And they want to look good, they want to look pretty, they want to look capable, but they two years old, and there's just more steadiness I think the organization needs. And those comments, I'll be supportive of Commissioner Welch's motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. And as this board's representative on the Children's Services Council, Mr. Lammy did come to one of our meetings and he presented the proposal. Just for presentation, it was nothing that we had to vote upon. We haven't had this presented to the board to vote upon. I can assure you that if a proposal is made and it, it passes the scrutiny of our executive director, whether it does or not, I think the executive director would bring it before the board for our consideration. But at this point, this entire process has not been really discussed, scrutinized, or voted upon by the Children's Services Council. If it's in the best interest of the children, I promise you, we will, because we want what's best, you know, for our children. And having all these service providers provide services to our children with some of the CSC funding, I just believe it, it would be no question that we would, you know, it would be acceptable by the board. Okay?
Madam Chair, may I have one more comment? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I just want to make it very clear to everybody there, this negotia, this is a negotiation that's gonna happen over the next two-year period. There's, and the CSC as well as the city and the county are all their own separate governments that, that really work off of tax dollars. And there's no guarantee that at the end of this two years, that agreement will be reached that, that, that suffices enough to us for every, for everyone to feel comfortable with the direction that we're move, that we're trying to move in. We may be at the same point in two years that we are now, and I think we have to prepare ourselves at some point over the next year and a half or so, as to what even that's gonna look like. Because I could very well see us sitting right here, having this conversation, the CSC saying they can't come up with a way, there isn't a way to work this thing out, we're having to figure out another two-year cycle, which, which I just, I just don't want it to be an assumption that, that, you know, at the end of this thing, a negotiation is gonna happen in a way that works for all of the organizations that they're trying to be funded. Remember, I said that not everybody's gonna come out of this thing happy. And so we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to be okay with that in the end, or we're gonna have to be okay with doing the same thing today that we did, the same thing in two years that we're doing today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. I believe we want the motion restated. Can you, can you? I know the county administrator has taken.
Absolutely. But essentially, what the direction was, was for county staff to continue to work with the CSC and the city of Tallahassee to essentially replicate to the greatest extent possible and build it as much certainty as possible into the, into the system for the CSC to, after the current two-year cycle is completed, so no changes for the, for the current two-year cycle, and to see if that, if we can transition after that time to a CSC process which does that, which replicates and funds to the greatest extent possible our existing category, categorical funding.
Thank you.
Took the words right out of my mouth.
Madam Chair, is this?
Thank you for all your.
Is this MOU indefinite? I couldn't see a date of termination. Is it five years? There's a reference to five years under V8. How long does this MOU serve? I, I don't even see a termination point.
And I think generally, and I'll let the county administrator weigh in, but I know many instances, we have, we amend our MOUs. Madam Attorney?
I just don't have one before me.
Okay, Commissioner Proctor, I'm gonna let the county attorney address that.
Madam Chair, it's actually section four of the MOU terms slash termination. This MOU will commence on the date set forth above and will continue until a party gives 30 days written notice of intent to terminate. That's the term.
Impotent, okay.
Thank you.
Is there any interest in, I'm sorry, is there any interest in including UPHS and other organizations in the conversations about the makeup of how this looks in the future?
Okay, I didn't understand your comment, Commissioner Maddox. Say it again, please.
Is there any interest on the board in, including opinions from UPHS as well as organizations affected in how this thing works out in the negotiations?
Well, they will be obligated to bring it back to the board. I mean, we will know.
No, ma'am, I mean, I mean like when we're, when staff is having this conversation, having them included.
Oh, I'm sorry, include United Partner in the process. I think all of the service providers. Because like, I believe we gave direction at our last meeting, we asked the group if they would contact those service providers of our children and our families, and I think they tried to engage them. I understand they had seven or eight meetings with those service providers, so I don't believe they would be excluded. Correct, Mr. Lammy? Nobody would be excluded. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Maddox?
Madam Chair, recuse myself.
Oh, you, I'm sorry. And I vote aye.
Madam Chair, for the record, I've recused myself as well.
Okay. I voted aye. Commissioner Minor recused himself, as well as Commissioner Maddox recused himself. Thank you all for a robust discussion, and I think it clearly indicates that we are all concerned about our children and our families, as well as those that provide services to them. Mr. County Administrator?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mike on here, thank you very much. The, the item before you, item number 28, request of a public hearing prohibiting unauthorized solicitation on private property. Commissioners, this item seeks board approval to schedule the first and only public hearing to consider adopting the proposed ordinance prohibiting unauthorized solicitation on private property.
Move option one, Madam Chair.
Thank you, in a discussion. Commissioner O'Keefe?
I'll keep it brief. I'm gonna oppose this, as I have last time and will next time, just in the interest of, I don't believe that we help this problem by perhaps imposing more penalties on people who are in need. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Any other discussions? Commissioner Welch?
Thank you, and Commissioner O'Keefe, I totally appreciate and sensitive to your concerns in that regard, and, and we, I, but I see this as a, or keeping up with our, you know, Gainesville's doing something similar. It really, I think, would provide a, some relief to our business community of the burden of trying to go through the trespassing process and the legal processes of doing those things. And this just provides for a, a more expeditious way for them to operate their businesses. But I do appreciate your sensitivity to it, and I think we're all sensitive to it and wanna continue to work towards solutions in this regard, so, thank you.
Thank you. And, and I, I too am, am sensitive to, you know, this segment of our, of our population. We've always been concerned about not criminalizing, you know, the status of individuals, but because this ordinance is specifically directed to private property, private property, I don't have a major concern with it. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of option one, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
None.
Commissioner Maddox?
Aye.
Okay, and I vote aye. Thank you so much. Mr. County Administrator?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number 29 seeks nominations to the governor for the appointment of the Children's Services Council of Leon County. The item seeks the board's nomination of eligible applicants to be forward to the governor for consideration to fill three vacant seats. Per Florida statutes, the board's required to submit the governor the names of at least three persons for each vacancy. The board had previously submitted nine nominations for the three agencies, but on December 13th, the governor's office requested a new list of candidates. You have before you both the old list of nine, as well as a new list of what was 10, but we distributed an additional one that we got in just very recently to make that 11. So the board, again, has the opportunity here with eligible applicants before you to submit any number of those applicants over nine for the, for the governor's consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Executive Director. And what I would like to do, as a member of the Children's Services Council, I would like to entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I moved.
Hold on, hold, hold on, please, hold on, please. We have one speaker on the item.
I'm very sorry, I'm not sure if they're still with us. John Sheets? Yes, he is. Thank you, sorry about that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sheets.
Thank you very much for letting me speak on this issue, and I really want to thank you for the hard work that you do. I think I've benefited from this discussion around item 27, and I come to you today as a private citizen of District Five. Typically, I come to speak to groups on behalf of others or behalf of organizations, so this is a bit unusual for me, but I come to speak on my own behalf. I'd like to ask you to include my name and the current chair, Dr. Xandra Glenn, to your nominees. Both of us were previously nominated by this body and are in that list that you have in front of you from the last round. I just want to take a couple moments to highlight some things that are on my application and a few things that are not captured there on the application. I have been working on youth empowerment, organizational development, and family supports for over 20 years. I'm a returned Peace Corps volunteer from Ukraine, where I worked on youth development, and I stayed on to support an orphanage there, in their development. I'm a kidney donor, I'm a father, I've served as a foster parent in this community. I've been a United Way reading pal for many years, and I've worked for the last four days coaching and supporting youth that have aged out of foster care or experience homelessness. They've come from all over the state, I'm the mentor for our local chapter, there's volunteer work that I do, and they've spent the last two days meeting with over 50 of our elected officials across the street advocating for change, not for themselves, but for their peers. In previous rounds, I had recommendation of a former dean from the College of Social Work, a former DCF Assistant Secretary, and Judge Shorstrom, who helped to set up the Children's Service Council. I currently work on projects to improve the child welfare system across the state. I have been following the council from the beginning, attending forums, open houses, and I've realized in waiting for the governor's appointment that there was no reason I couldn't attend the board meetings as a private citizen, so I've been doing that for the last quarter. And, and I think that is very helpful for me to hear the other conversation that was here tonight. I've applied to open seats when, since the council's inception. I don't know the other candidates on the list, but the names that are familiar with me are all good candidates, but I'm here tonight to ask particularly for myself, John Sheets, and again for our, the current chair, Xandra Glenn. I invite you to ask me any questions that, that you'd like, now or later, I'm ready to serve, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sheets, for coming. We appreciate it.
Madam Chair.
I don't think anyone has any questions. Okay, Mr. County, I'm sorry, Commissioner Proctor?
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate table two, those persons who were previously submitted to our governor's office, and Mr. Sheets' name is on this list, and I believe that if I read it right, staff, please correct me, governor's office refused to do anything within the 45-day window, which they were supposed to, and they waited five months. And when they waited five months, they asked for new presentation of names. I'm elected, everybody up here is elected, we sent people's names, we're good citizens like Mr. Sheets qualified. Why is the governor turning down, or their office turning down, citizens of our community to serve on our Children's Services Council? There are people that we know, you know, I know, and I'd like to send the same names back up there because we got no response.
Okay, Commissioner, let's get a second first, and I'll let you go.
Second?
Thank you. Go ahead, go on, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. And this is the problem with democracy. We had a, we had a congressman representing our area. The legislature recommended that a, a bit of sense of cartography drew maps that allowed for Mr. Lawson to continue to be congressional five C. Governor decided to veto, call a special session, and put forth his map, of which he is not the state's cartographer. So here we are, he done took away our congressman, 90% of the people in District One voted for our congressman, he took that away. We telling him, these are the names that we want, and he can just poo-poo us. This is why I did not support Children's Services Council initially and stood with those who opposed it, because the governor, who's put no money, the state has put no money in this, but gets to make five of the nine recommendations, he, he's, is just totally inconsistent with, in fact, what he's doing is the very reason we had the American Revolution, we had taxation without representation. How does, how does Great Britain get to dictate who's gonna leave us colonies here in Leon County, the colony of Leon County? Ain't got no money in the game. We are sending names to Great Britain, and Great Britain refuses, who we are offering, tell us glibly, we don't want these folk, they ain't good enough. I say these people are good enough, but stand by this sheet of paper, these names ain't our fault that the governor don't want them, people didn't want him, but we want these people, and I think we should stand by what we said the first time. We never got no explanation on anything other than they just took five months instead of 45 days to prove these people. Let's send the same names back up there.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. What I would like to do, Commissioners, since I am on the, you're representative on the Children's Services Council, the statute says we need to send a minimum of three per vacant position. It doesn't give us a maximum. So I would like to institute, to entertain a substitute, substitute motion to submit both lists in addition to, I believe Dr. David Bellamy was our only additional applicant. So I'd like to just entertain a substitute motion to send both lists, as well as Dr. Bellamy, we just sent it all to him. Thank you.
I would make that motion. Just send both lists, an additional applicant.
Is there a second?
Sorry, I need, you need on the microphone. I would make that motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Commissioner O'Keefe?
Another broken record. I'm gonna end up respectfully opposing this, just because there are some names that I find, I don't believe would be in the best interest, so just a little explanation for what's coming. Thank you.
Okay, some clarification, some names on the second list, is what you're saying? Okay. Any other comment? Okay, all those in favor of the substitute motion, which is to send both lists to the governor in addition to the last applicant, Dr. Bellamy? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Maddox, are you there?
Aye.
Okay, any opposition?
Aye.
Commissioner, Commissioner O'Keefe, Commissioner Minor? Okay, two oppositions.
No, I opposed as well.
I'm sorry?
I opposed as well.
I thought it was your motion. It was yours.
Say stay with the original list.
Oh, the original list and not the second list?
No.
Okay.
That's not what, we, we elected to serve.
Okay, so we have three and four.
Governor's not elected to serve our county.
The governor's not elected to serve our county on making these recommendations on a board that we 100% fund.
Thank you. Mr. County Administrator?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number 30 seeks the full board appointment to the Affordable Housing Committee and the Affordable, and the Advisory Committee for Quality Growth. The item seeks, or the item recommends options one and two with the appointment of two eligible applicants, which satisfied the membership requirement. No speaker votes on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Commissioner Maddox?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. County Administrator, is anything further?
Madam Chair, that concludes your agenda.
Thank you. Now we will go to, if there are any comments from our county attorney.
But we have one speaker. Thank you. We have one speaker under citizens to be heard on non-adjourned items. Karen Precher.
Thank you, Ms. Precher.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing me tonight. I'm here about Airbnbs in neighborhoods. I recently had one that has been placed right next to my townhome. They've been operating less than a month. In that month, we've had loud noises all night, dogs barking all day and all night, other issues, parking, unable to get our cars out, fireworks. This was not New Year's. This was over a week later. One of the animals managed to get on top of a table or something on the other property and tried to get in our back patio that's completely closed in. This makes home a series of stress and a problem. And I just think we need, as a community, to have some kinds of regulations around these types of things so that we can preserve the integrity of our neighborhoods where our citizens live. And I would just like to ask the county commission to look into some things like that and maybe work with the city as well and come on the same page about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Precher. Anything further? Any other speakers, Mr. County Administrator? Thank you. Now we're at commission comments. Commissioner O'Keefe? Oh, I'm sorry. Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have one item for the board this evening. The Leon County Canvassing Board had its organizational meeting last Friday, and I was notified today that the board has requested, as it has in the two previous election cycles, that I represent the canvassing board in the upcoming election cycle. So I'm seeking direction from the board whether you wish to authorize me to provide that representation or alternatively, if time demands and constraints dictate, give me authority to hire counsel to represent the canvassing board. Thank you.
So moved, Madam Attorney?
Second.
Moved.
Madam Chair, I can testify to the county attorney's skill at representing the canvassing board very well. She is a true professional.
Awesome. Thank you. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Commissioner Maddox?
Aye.
Aye. You have it, Madam Attorney. Anything further? Okay, thank you. Mr. County Administrator?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just three very quick things. One, thank you very much to the board on all the good direction we got at the retreat yesterday. Storm recap, I know it feels like a year ago, but since last time we met, I just wanted to give a big thanks to county staff related to the very severe squall that came through. Even though we recovered very quickly, there were over 100 trees down over county roads and quarters which were cleared very quickly. Again, lucky for us and for our community, very little structural damage and no loss of life, which is the big important thing. Of course, we continue to learn from each one of these. And finally, legislative session. I wanted to do just very quickly, I asked Nikki Payton to be prepared tonight, but I'm sensitive at the length of your meeting, prepared to do a quick update. I'll give it for her if you'd like, and just know that she's here to answer any questions you have. We're three weeks into session, or as Nikki calls it, the first trimester of session. And in that time, we've got a lot of bad bills filed. There's a lot of preemption bills filed, a lot of bills filed related that are going to impact county revenues, but potentially, and obviously, there are issues like term limits and other preemption issues that we're paying a lot of attention to. Again, you'll get your updates on every Friday throughout session, and please note that we're always here to answer any questions you might have, and we'll be calling upon you throughout session when we need you to come pitch in. Unless you have any other questions, we're happy to answer them, but if not, that's the report.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Commissioner Minor? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I only have one item tonight. It's been brought to my attention that it might be time to reconsider increasing the benefits we offer for parental leave for our Leon County employees. We generally have stayed above the curve on that, but in the past years, the state of Florida came and snuck up on us, and the state of Florida has a more generous parental leave policy, and I just can't, I just don't think that's a great idea if we're getting beat by the state of Florida. And so I spoke with representatives from the Council on the Status of Women and Girls about it, and they are actually, as a council, developing community best practices for employer parental leave policies. And so I would like to make a motion that we ask staff to bring back a recommended improved parental leave policy for our employees with input from the report or the information from the Council on the Status of Women and Girls.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Maddox?
Aye.
Thank you. Anything further, Commissioner O'Keefe?
No. Now, I hope my wife doesn't try to push me to have more, to have kids now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Minor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think a lot of us had the opportunity to go see some of the DEMP Week events that took place last week, and just was really impressed with the things that DJ DEMP is doing for the community, and I think it was, you know, it had been doing it for so many years. What I wanted to do was actually seek a motion for a proclamation recognizing DJ DEMP for his work on DEMP Week and the contribution he brings to the community. Now, one thing that DJ DEMP told me was that the city has provided him with three proclamations over the years, and that Leon County has provided LUCAS. So right now, it's three zip. So I'd like to have this motion for a proclamation, but as an addendum, I'd like to actually have four copies of this proclamation made up so that we've got four and the city's got three. It's unacceptable that the city is leading this three-oh. So that's my motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Maddox?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you remember from the retreat yesterday, I mentioned briefly about a couple of things I wanted to bring to this body for this meeting. One, I talked about the electric vehicle goals that we've got, and the county's doing a good job. We pledged to have 30% of our light-duty vehicle fleet going EV by 2030. But since this was made, I think that the market has changed in EVs a bit. And so what I'd like to do is ask the county administrator and his team to take a look at what the existing market is for EVs and see if we can be more aggressive on that transition to electrical vehicles for our light-duty vehicle fleet. Recognizing, and the county administrator and I have talked about this, recognizing that we probably will never get to 100% because for emergency management, our vehicles, we need a certain number of them to be fuel-based so that, you know, if we have extended power outages, we don't run the risk of not having enough vehicles for transporting our employees for emergency management efforts. So I recognize that, but I'd like to have our county administrator direct his team to take a look at what we could do to accelerate that EV goal that we've got and then bring that back to us at a time that's suitable. So that's my motion.
Thank you. Is your motion on an agenda item to come back?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Commissioner Maddox?
Aye.
Okay. And I vote aye. Thank you so much.
Next thing, I also talked about yesterday about the sustainability event policy that we have, and we also do a good job with that. We've got a green events checklist that is available online on our website, allows people that engage with the county on events to go through that and make their events more sustainable. Like to see, the city's doing a really good job as well. They've got a pretty rigid, robust sustainability event policy. I'd like to see if we could take a look at what we could do with our existing policy, go further with the eye of actually having an even more robust sustainability event policy leading into the World Championship for Cross Country in 2026. Now, I understand the contract for that has already been signed. I'm assuming that it already has. So we need to work with the constraints of that contract. But there may be opportunities for us to, number one, upgrade our sustainability event policy and then also see where it might apply to the 2026 World Championships. So my motion is to bring back an agenda item along those lines.
Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Commissioner Maddox? Thank you, and I vote aye.
Thank you. And then the last thing, I just wanted to thank our county staff for organizing with the city, I believe, the Arbor Day that took place on January 20th, the Arbor Day Tree Planting Event. That was really terrific. I think it was over 100, I don't know, I can't remember the number. I think it was over 120 trees that were planted. It was very cold in the morning, but really great effort, really good turnout too from the public. And if you didn't get a chance to participate in the tree planting for that event, citizens can go to our Leon County website for an Arbor Day tree, basically Adopt a Tree. So you can go to leoncountyfl.gov/adoptatree, and there you can select from, I think, three different types of trees that you can actually have and plant on your home, on your property back home. So that's Leon County, Florida, leoncountyfl.gov/adoptatree. And with that, Madam Chair, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner O'Keefe? Caban, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It was good to be back in the swing with everyone here after the holidays. I know we had two long back-to-back meetings. I enjoyed some of the conversations that we had. I don't have too much, just want to give a quick thank you to the county administrator and staff. There was a couple District 2 items in consent, so I was happy to see those. And also, I just want to give a quick shout out to FDOT at the Florida Department of Transportation. They've really been doing some extensive work in District 2, from Silver Lake Road to Highway 20 to Capital Circle Southwest. They're just continuing to invest in District 2, and I appreciate their efforts. So that's all I got. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Caban. Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you, commissioners of the great commission. I enjoy working with you. We're a great commission, and Madam Chair, we appreciate the leadership, appreciate the things that we accomplished on yesterday. Among those things was that we asked, gave some direction to our county staff to look into forests, national forests, and securing. It was interesting tonight that we heard where the state gave Leon County land for the Greenway, the McKissick Greenway. And there's precedence of the state giving a charge of land, and there's also precedent for the federal government. Once we left that meeting on yesterday, I did a little digging, and Public Law 110- hyphen 343 is to Secure Rural Schools and Community Self-Determination Act. And there are five counties in Florida that receive payments in lieu of, and Walco is among those, where the federal government pays them because of the high percentage of forests that occupies and takes up their land, and that's federal government. We have 20% of our local properties, Leon County, occupied by the federal government. And I think that we would be well advised to pursue this measure that's already on the books called Secure Rural Schools and Community Self-Determination. I looked at the southern region for our forests that the government puts their name on, is claiming, and we've got Apalachicola National Forest, which is the one that occupies our space, Chattahoochee, we've got Okela National Forest, you might know a little something about that, and we have the Florida, the National Forest in Florida, and we have a significant stake. We need to look into Public Law 110-343 to find out what monies are available in light of the fact that so much of our land is occupied. Commissioners, I appreciate yesterday your support for a call for an official apology. Were we to adopt or do something tonight with respect to furthering that apology, or is it going to just come back at some point or what?
Madam Chair, yes, it was reflected in your ratification from yesterday. It'll be back to you at your next meeting.
Next meeting, okay. Thank you very much. Wanted to ask if we could get an update, our community, on the Community Reinvestment Act some years ago. Can't remember. I just can't remember about 2004 or '05. We got a chance to see what our banks were doing with respect to loans, new mortgages, where they were sending money. And the Community Reinvestment Act entitles us to a peek at what they are doing. It gives a demographic breakdown of the applicants by race, by gender, and some other things. And I think that our board would be well advised, it's been years now, to know if our banks are being fair in reflecting, in their loans, reflecting the areas of which they receive deposits. Mr. Administrator, this is going to be short. Can we get some lights on Crawfordsville Highway south of Wilson Green and inside the Urban Services area? We still, a little dark. Invite any and all of you, come down. I'd do anything legal to secure some lights for Crawfordsville Road from Wilson Green neighborhood down the Publix. And then finally, I just don't know what to do to get sewer started for citizens down inside the Urban Services area. And I don't know if I need a motion, Madam Attorney. What can we do to instigate, to investigate, to somehow agitate? What do we do to get the people in that area to be brought to a standard, health standard equal to most of the community in a contemporary age? What would you recommend that we do to get central sewer pipes inside the Urban Services area to black communities that have to put theirs in the backyard?
You want to address it, Mr. County Administrator?
Sure. We're happy to bring something back. We'll check in with the city, and we'll bring a stash court back upon the board's direction.
Do we need a motion?
That would be great, and if you can tie the CRA item into that one too, we'll bring that back, and you don't need to do it on Crawfordsville Lights. I'll check into that, Commissioner Proctor.
Yes, sir. Then on yesterday...
Okay, let's do a motion on that first.
So move.
So that's on the Community Reinvestment Act and sewer inside the Urban Services area. On agenda item to come back. Is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Commissioner?
Aye.
Thank you.
And yesterday, the debt service schedule that our commission can receive then on when our debts, current debts, are going to expire, and the monies that we're putting out intermittently for services of debt, I think that we deserve, and maybe it could be incorporated in our budget.
Yes, great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Let me get difference. I'll come back to my co-chair. Commissioner Maddox?
Yes, ma'am. I just want to request a proclamation on behalf of, excuse my son. He's supposed to be sick. National MS Society requested a proclamation for March being National MS- The National MS Society requested a proclamation for March being National MS Month in Leon County. They want that to be presented at the March meeting. Madam Chair, that's my motion, and that's all I have.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Aye. No opposition? Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to call to your attention an item that was on consent this, well, I lost it this morning, this afternoon, in regards to an ambulance placement at the fire station on Centerville Road with advanced life-saving capabilities, fixed placement. This is a big win for the folks on that Centerville Road corridor, the only rural fire station that did not have a permanent advanced life-saving capability. This was a pretty big lift by the county administrator in cooperation with the city of Tallahassee. Just want to thank them and the fire chief for helping get that done, and that was on our consent agenda earlier. Thank you to Madam Chair for letting me kind of hang out on the opening remarks circuit last week. I was able to go to the visit Tallahassee marketing rollout, as well as the Tallahassee Symphony Orchestra performance on Sunday and deliver some opening remarks on behalf of the county. Both excellent events carry post, if you're still here. Oh, there you are. Did a great job with the marketing rollout at Mission San Luis, perfectly appropriate venue for our 200-year bicentennial kickoff for our hoteliers and our restaurant folks. And we've got a great agenda scheduled for marketing and visiting in this next year. And the Tallahassee Symphony Orchestra, I mean, I don't know if anybody saw it, it was incredible. School Board member Darryl Jones reciting the words of Abraham Lincoln in that voice of his over that music. I mean, incredibly powerful stuff. So I wanted to congratulate school board member Jones, number one, with just an absolutely incredible performance, as well as the Symphony Orchestra. I am not much of a Symphony guy, you know, no, probably a secret there. Yeah, you're shocked, aren't you? Yeah. But I tell you what, I was totally captivated as I sat there in Ruby Diamond Concert Hall and listened to this with a wonderful visual history of Tallahassee and stuff going on in the background. So also wanted to thank Congressman Neil Dunn, who I met with again this afternoon about postal service issues in northeast Leon County. I'm not immune to the idea that there are postal service issues all over the county. So I would encourage any of you to contact the congressman if you have concerns with that. He is equally concerned with that. I know we've got some real chronic problems in District Four, but I'm sure those problems exist elsewhere. So and then congratulations to Rob Clark on being the new chamber chair. Was able to go to the breakfast with Commissioner O'Keefe and Commissioner Minor this week, and they put on a nice event. So other than that, I think that's all I've got, Madam Chair. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Co-Chair. I just want to thank a county administrator and all his remarkable staff for all that they do yesterday in preparation, in presentation at the county retreat. And I want to thank all my fellow commissioners for your input and cooperation during that retreat, as well as your input tonight. I know it's been a long meeting, but we had some very important issues that were very important to the community, and I think we were able to listen to the public, listen to the voters, listen to the citizens. And I believe we really reached some resolutions that we all can live with, you know, going forward. So thank you all. I just appreciate the collegial nature of our commission and of our body. I want to thank my co-chair, Commissioner Welch, for pitch hitting for me last week. I really had looked forward to a lot of those events, especially the symphonic band doing the greeting. He doesn't know, I played in the symphonic band in college. So I love symphony music, so I had planned to be there. And then other events that he stepped in for me last week and just took over, and I appreciate it. It's good to have a good co-chair, and most of you. I'm really not derelict in my duties, but I had a real, real serious car accident Tuesday, totaled my car. I'm kind of stowed up now, but I'm just blessed to be here. So thank you guys for the phone calls and your prayers, but you saw my car. You will see why I'm saying I'm just blessed, really blessed to be here. So thank you so much.
Madam Chair, I will represent you at Yolanda Adams if you, you know, don't feel like going to see Yolanda. I'll back you up on that one.
Thank you. I want to thank also Commissioner Proctor. Every year, he spearheads the MLK celebration in the rotunda downstairs here at the county courthouse. We had a beautiful service on MLK Day, well, no, the week before, the Wednesday before. And we had a remarkable speaker, a school board member, Darryl Jones. He's also a member of the Children's Services Council, but he just did a remarkable job as our guest speaker. So I just want to thank Commissioner Proctor for always spearheading that event, bringing us together, reminding us of justice and equality that Dr. King stood for throughout his lifetime, and that he continues to invigorate us to work toward those goals. I also want to ask the board for the board's support in sponsoring a symposium during Black History Month. We know that Black History Month is coming up in February, but it's entitled Teaching Our Own History. And it's scheduled to be held February the 26th through the 27th. And it's slated to present rich, important, and factually correct history about African-Americans in our country here in Leon County, Tallahassee. And the hope from the symposium is that that information will be incorporated into the curriculum of our schoolchildren. I'm seeking the board's support for $15,000 from the Contingency Fund. Belta Baptist Church is hosting it, and some of the leading historians and leading scholars will be coming in that weekend making presentations. Now, they did the same request for the city. They're asking the city commission, they've asked the city commission for 15,000. The city commission has already agreed, voted, and approved 15,000 for this very, very significant symposium, and it will take place the whole weekend.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, just a point of...
Okay, since it's not on the public...
Are you passing the gavel to make the motion? Or are you asking, are you passing the gavel to make the motion, or are you asking someone else to make the motion?
Okay. No, I'm asking somebody else.
Okay.
So since it's not on the public agenda, what I'd like to do is entertain a motion to waive the rules to consider the sponsorship of this request, and it's entitled Teaching Our Own History. And I recognize that it involves, it requires, Madam County Attorney, a unanimous, it requires unanimous vote by the board. But I'm asking, I'd like to entertain a motion and just recognize that the city has already obligated their funding.
Chair, we waive the rules to take this matter up.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of waiving the rules, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Okay.
Aye.
Thank you. So I'd like the motion to operate, authorize the county attorney to approve a budget amendment. I can make the motion again, since we waived the rule? No? Well, let me say it this way. I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize the county attorney to approve a budget amendment in the amount of $15,000 from the board's general contingency fund to sponsor this very, very significant symposium, Teaching Our Own History.
Madam Chair, I made the motion that we would take $15,000 out of our contingency fund to sponsor this event. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Is there a second?
No second.
In a discussion. Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know you said it, but I didn't catch it. Can you specify the organization that the sponsorship is going for?
Yeah, it's called Save, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. It's sponsored by the Baptist Convention. Let me see. I'm sorry. Teaching Our Own, okay, Teaching Our Own History Task Force. Teaching Our Own History Task Force. Belta Missionary Baptist Church will be the host church, the hotel, host hotel is the Sheraton Four Points Hotel. They're expecting renowned speakers from all over the country who are experts in history, in African-American history, American history, and let's see what else. There has already been a task force. They have been working on this for an entire year, and it's going to culminate in February during Black History Month. So it's very important that they schedule it during the month of Black History. And I think it's significant too, because here in Tallahassee, we are celebrating 200 years of being in existence, Tallahassee and Leon County. And one of the things that the mayor and I have done, we've been on the circuit, you know, just emphasizing our history. And one of the things that we say, and the mayor does as well, is that all of our history is important. Good, bad, good, the bad, the ugly, it's all important. We don't want to ignore any of our history. And so that's why this symposium is very, very important, significant. Teaching Our Own History is the name of it. But it's a national group. I don't see it here. I don't see it on my paperwork, I'm sorry. To answer your question, Commissioner O'Keefe, I don't see it on my...
Thank you. I just have a procedure question.
Sir?
I just have a procedure question. The unanimous is required for what we just did to waive the rules. This vote will be normal majority. This vote, this coming vote, won't need to be unanimous?
Oh, okay. So will it be, since we waived the rule, will it be just majority vote, Madam?
In my time here, the board has never waived the board policy requiring that for a substantive matter to be considered during commissioner time, that it not require unanimous? That is the board's policy? The board has waived that requirement? It can do it under a majority if it wishes.
Majority, okay. Any other discussion?
So the waiving of the rules, that was to waive that part? I'm confused. That's what we waived?
That was what your motion was, was to waive the rules. That's what I thought. Was that what you thought you were motioning?
So now she's saying it's the majority vote? It's just majority, majority vote, basically, Commissioner Maddox. No other comment? Yes, Commissioner Caban?
Madam Chair, I will, I will support this for you.
Thank you so much.
But I just have a fear that there's, I have, we like, we don't have any information on this. And I know that Commissioner Welch, last time, we discussed that this was going to be the last time that we did this. But, you know, I'm partial because I want to do it for you. But I also, I don't want, I'm fearful that this is going to continue to be an issue that comes before the board, where we have funding items with significant amounts before the board with not enough information.
Oh, yes.
Now, I will do it for you, but I just don't want, I know it's important to you, but I just don't, I don't know if, how do we get to a place where, you know, this doesn't keep, you know, popping up, where we're kind of forced between, you know, supporting our colleague and supporting an event without a lot of information? Does that make sense?
That does make sense, and thank you, Commissioner Caban. And I understand we do have a process. I didn't get this request in time to go through the process. I don't think the city did either. But to answer Commissioner Caban's question, it's up here. It's the Florida Journal Baptist Convention Incorporated. It's like the umbrella, umbrella group that's adopted this, Teaching Our Own History. And I think it's only proper that we're in a capital city and that we have the launch and kickoff here in Leon County, Tallahassee, during Black History Month, but also during our celebration of the 200-year centennial. Okay. Yes, sir, Commissioner Welch.
Madam Chair, I hate that I gotta do this, but I cannot support this. I said before, we have got to have some policy, and it's just not responsible, in my opinion, to be propping out 10 and 15 and 5 and $25,000 requests for money without any understanding of where it's going or what it's for, or no clear idea of who's going to actually get that money, if it's a table sponsor, what it's for. I really appreciate Commissioner Caban's sentiment, which is, it's a really, it puts us in a difficult position. And we've got to draw the line somewhere. And so I apologize, but I will not be able to support this request. Now, I'll offer this, Madam Chair. If, you said it's February 23rd?
26 through 27.
Our next meeting is in February, second week of February. If staff wants to bring back some kind of analysis of where this money's going, who's getting this money, what it's going to be used for, what the impacts are, is it a local group, is it a national group? I mean, these are all, I think, very valid questions. I'd be willing to consider it then, but I cannot consider it in this moment in time. Sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Are there any other, any other, Commissioner O'Keefe?
I'm sorry.
I'll come back to you, Commissioner.
If it's okay, I'll defer and wait.
Okay, Commissioner Maddox.
Madam Chair, is there anything that prevents us from having an agenda item in February? This is being considered on the agenda in February, since the event comes after the meeting, I think in the preceding opportunities when we've done this, the event actually happened before we have a next meeting. So I'm looking to see if we can consider having it as the next agenda item, at the agenda meeting as an agenda item, and then make a decision on it.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. The only thing is, I understand that it's in the planning stages right now, national figures will be coming, and I think the notion is to have the funding, or at least have an obligation for the funding prior to the event, so that there can be some planning on, you know, national people that will be coming. So it's scheduled February 26th through 27th, and I believe our commission meeting is what, the week before?
20th, February 20th.
Yeah. So it's six days before the function. Commissioner Caban?
I'm just throwing an idea out there to try to help get to where you want to go and maybe appease everybody. Is, if we're just having one agenda item, would it be possible to just schedule a special meeting next week and have one agenda item come back, and we just bust it out, we discuss it? So that way, we have a formal agenda item with an analysis. I mean, I don't know if that's too short a time, it's for one agenda item, for staff to do a quick analysis on it?
Commissioner Proctor?
The gravity, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. I was, I still wanted to speak after Commissioner Maddox. I was just referring to let him go first.
I'm sorry, Commissioner O'Keefe.
Sure. I was still, Madam Chair, I was still in queue after Commissioner Maddox, if I may. I didn't want to cut Commissioner Proctor off, but I didn't want to get down the line.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, you know, we have the motion on, and I just, respectfully, I share Commissioner Welch's sentiment and won't be able to support this motion tonight. But were it to come on an agenda on the 20th, it'd be easy. With more information, I'm sure it'd be easy, yes. Thank you. With more information, I'm sure it'd be easy, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, O'Keefe, Commissioner Proctor?
Uh, Commissioner Caban, uh, this issue is not substantive uh, for a special meeting. It's a small funding request, but we probably spent about fifteen thousand dollars worth of staff time and all of that uh, for this item. I'm sensitive to the support of this item, but like Commissioner Caban, uh, our chairwoman, I have great respect for. Pastor Holmes, uh, Bethel Church, uh, the work of their school, the work of their elder center, new developments occurring, the heavy lifting, year after year, um, you have to respect. This issue, uh, as Florida is grappling with cultural wars, African-American history being purged from the school, school roles. Commissioner of Education last, last week, calling D E I, discrimination, exclusion, and indoctrination. It's just that black folk is getting hit all over the top of the head and kicked in the butt with respect to the authenticity and the legitimacy of history and perspective of Africans. We have, um, languishing in the Supreme Court. They won't budge or do nothing on a congressional district. I don't know where the hell we going? And the hostile forces of the state right now, the heat with which, uh, the authenticity of our very existence is being, uh, I mean, you compel or support this. Not that procedurally, normally, normally I would. But I understand the war, uh, against opportunities. Now, our Supreme Court attacked the front of action. And the kids that you met yesterday, who were my students, there won't be weighted considerations when they apply for graduate and professional school. And some of them may not go as a result of a Supreme Court ruling. So I have a chance to vote on whether or not our county, and I believe that our county believes. And I was impressed with the Presbyterian churches, and I want to give a shout out to Presbyterian Church, like, uh, their apologies for roles that have been conducted by their institution or church and by its members as individuals. But there comes a time when it's just your plain old heart. And this ask of, of church leaders seeking to come together, to look at what can possibly be a curriculum for African-American history. I appeared last year on Fox News, uh, talking about, um, this, this, um, what should be comprised of the testing component. And, uh, this curriculum, they came out of, uh, uh, college, college board. College board done lost their way. So I'm very, very clear about the proceduralness and ordinarily to it not taking form and coming through us the right way and all of that. Or even the request to support a church. Right now, I don't know anybody who is defending for my grandchildren or fighting as New Hampshire votes tonight, and all possibilities to vote for Donald Trump. So hell, yeah, I'm gonna vote for this. Because everything I see is coming after me and coming after, uh, my ancestry and the legitimacy of what we have fought in our county. And my appreciation for our unanimous vote yesterday to apologize for the struggle of African life in this community. And what these people trying to do is bring scholars to see what can constitute a viable, uh, energetic history capturing. Have to support it. So I'm gonna pull up off the soapbox, 'cause, uh, I need to go somewhere.
Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate you bringing this up, Commissioner, but this is a tough one, but we love you. We love you. And I believe that integrity and what, and what inspires this is heavy as it can be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Maddox?
Let me first say, I, I, I have enjoyed the sentimental comments given by Bill tonight. So, 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 so sentimental. I've never seen Bill quite like this. I enjoy watching this. But I do want to alter my motion. I, I think, I'm on both ends. I hear what Bill's saying, I hear what you're saying, Madam Chair. And this is, this is so important to history, to our history, to, to everyone's history, that, that things like this happen, that we be able to sponsor things like this. But I also hear what Commissioner Welch and Commissioner O'Keefe and even Commissioner Caban are saying. And I think, I don't want us to get the reputation of, you can come to us last minute, and because it's important, we have the flexibility, we're gonna go ahead and, 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 and go with it. So I think I want to approve the funding. But I also want to include in my motion that policy be created that no, under no circumstances, sponsorship can be approved without an agenda item at any time that's north, that's above the, the threshold of twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, I just, it's, it's just becoming a thing where, at the end of the meeting, folks will come, they'll ask. And, 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 and all these things are important. And so I can see this coming down the road, and we're put in the same position. And I just, I just don't, I just want to, I want, I want to at least create a situation to where we take some of that flexibility away from, from ourselves, and we have to push it to an agenda item. To be honest with you, I want to push all, all funding, you know, you know what? I'll change it. My, my, my motion alteration, Madam Chair, is that we approve the fifteen thousand dollars tonight, and that after this meeting, no sponsorship funding will be considered unless by, um, no, no sponsorship funding brought up during commissioner time will be considered without an agenda item. So the only way you can get to that is through going through an agenda item and it being researched by staff and approved. Uh, I just, we, we've done this three times, but I just want us to, I think we have to put ourselves in a position where we're letting everyone else know that you have to go through a process, and there's no other way about it. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's, that's my motion. I don't know if my, my second stays with me, but that's, that's my motion.
Is there a second? That's for lack of second, Commissioner Maddox, Commissioner Proctor?
Chair, the motion, which, uh, did you withdraw your motion, Commissioner Maddox?
His first motion was to approve the funding.
Is that now standing?
The second was bad. It was no second.
Okay, okay.
So we only had one motion on the floor.
I'm, I'm with the first.
Okay, thank you. And, and let me just say this too. I certainly appreciate, uh, Commissioner Caban, Commissioner, uh, Proctor uh, in supporting, uh, the, the motion that's on the floor. And I would hope that the other commissioners would reconsider and just consider the sensitivity of this to members on this board that don't look like you. African-American history has been attacked this last couple of years federal level and on the state level. And on the state level, we have felt the most devastating impact from our governor and our state legislators who instituted a legislation to disallow funding at our universities and colleges, but any programs tangentially connected to equity, inclusion, and diversity. As a result, many people on these college and university campuses have lost their jobs. Jobs that they had for years, even though there is provisions in Florida statute for inclusion of everyone. The governors proposed it, the legislature bought it. This is an effort on the part of us, people that look like me, to promote African-American history, which has been systematically excluded from our schools in Florida. It's been, it's been excluded. There is no effort to exclude majority history, but it's effort to exclude, uh, minority history. And I guess I'm extra sensitive to this because my great-great-grandmother was a slave. And I think her history is important. And many citizens in Leon County, here in Tallahassee, have descendants that were slaves, and there's an effort to wipe out all of their history. My history is important. Your history, uh, is important. And because there's an effort to wipe this out for my schoolchildren, books are taken off the shelf, this symposium is designed so that we of African-American descent can have a symposium and recognize that we too are important, and that we too played a role in organizing the state, the city, and this county. And I'm not, we're not asking for commission funds. This is taxpayers' funds. And those of us of African-American descent pay tax, pay taxes here in this county. And while I recognize, Madam, uh, Mr. County Administrator, that we do have a policy that deals with requests for funding, I ask you to consider that this is unique because I believe this is the first time since I have lived in Florida that there is a direct onslaught on teaching the history of our people from the top to the bottom. This is a unique situation. And a symposium like this is very essential to my children, my grandchildren, your children. And it doesn't matter whether you're black, white, or blue. I believe all of our history is important, all of our history is essential, whether it's good, bad, or ugly. We know the history and we move on. And while, like I say, I recognize there is a policy, this is a unique situation. I believe this symposium will go on without the support of this board, but I really do not want the city to support this effort. And we sit here as the county and refuse to do so, when we only talking about fifteen thousand dollars of taxpayers' money. So I'm hoping that my fellow members on the commission would think again, and let's not put form over substance. This is substance. This is substance. And I ask that we not put form over substance, and that we grant this, this minor subsidy. And I can assure you that taxes that we pay, the taxes that I pay on property that I own here is over half of this amount, and I'm just one person. So I implore you to think again. I know we have a policy, of Commissioner Welch, Commissioner O'Keefe, I know we do. But this is a unique situation where the very existence of my people is being attacked. And we can't sit around and allow somebody else to tell our history. We're trying to do it ourselves, and we're just asking for a little, minute piece of taxpayers' money.
Madam Chair, I, such a perfect role. I was trying to be, and I wanted to be very politically correct, because you was on the steps of the Capitol. Last week, the mayor was there, Kerry Post was up there, and it was Leon County's day at the Capitol. And it really, really, really struck me to the core that the Secretary of State was the opening speaker.
Mm-hmm.
And y'all sat there and smiling, sitting up there with him talking stuff, and a resolution. I just couldn't believe, and I had to leave and go home. I couldn't stand there. Because that man filed a motion with the Supreme Court on December 29th to tell the Supreme Court of Florida to not listen to the appeal of those plaintiffs who are seeking a hearing on restoring congressional seat five. So sixteen, eighteen, twenty, and twenty-two, and twenty. My district had a black man as the congressman, a Democrat registered like me. And the Secretary of State, who acted like he was, uh, reading a resolution for Leon County, but he stuck a knife in our back and wrote the Supreme Court urging him to not listen to us. We ain't worth their time. I had to leave. I mean, it, it's just dastardly things occurring. And the Secretary of State's supposed to be fair, and his argument should have been, "Court, please listen to the pleas of all voters." He's the referee of all the elections. But he took sides and told the court that my district, the black folk who had a black person representing North Florida across the slave belt of North Florida, from Gaston, Leon, all the slave counties, that we weren't worth it. And it's these insults that inflame, and you try to keep your cool, and you try to remain poised, and they don't want you to. We have a lily-white, all-male congressional front in North Florida. We only have a Democrat. We the Capitol, the Capitol of Florida, and for whatever that means, we majority Democratic. But the Secretary of State ain't interested in us having a Democrat, and the governor is not interested. And then, not only is he not interested, but he's not even interested in a sheet of paper with names that we sent with black people on it that serve on the Children's Services Council. He wants a lily-white sheet of paper. Let's be real about it. But you try to be cool up here and be poised, and don't go there and all of that. But we, we just saying what, what, what we see. And, um, every person has their own convictions about how they vote, but not all of our thoughts are generated from the same realities. So I, um, I back my chairwoman. Her ask, commissioners, is that substance over form? And if you in our shoes, uh, how would you feel with all the things that we're seeing on the constant, constant basis? And, um, I've never heard, I, I never heard the chairwoman speak as she's done tonight. Um, I'm, 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 I've never heard that. And she's not that person. I am, but she's not that person that comes like that. And, um, coming from, uh, Mississippi, um, um, you know, those experiences are raw. Annie Lou Hamer comes out of Mississippi. Um, um, Medgar Evers comes out of Mississippi. Um, on, on, and on. But our chairwoman is pleading from a place that every, every slave inside of my DNA is running all across the back of my shoulders, and they hear you. I don't know what y'all hear, but I got a lot of people who comprise my DNA that hear everything you've just said. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Welch.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Proctor, I'm also from Mississippi. Moved here the day after I graduated high school. Very familiar with the things that you discuss, very familiar with the things that the chair discusses. Obviously, Madam Chair had a different experience growing up in Mississippi than I did. But what we're talking about here is a precedent that we have set, intentionally or not, when every time somebody comes up here at the last minute, it's crucial. It's important. It's different. We can't function like that. It's not fair to the entire community. It's not fair to all the other events that would like sponsorships. And we have a responsibility to dole out taxpayer money responsibly. And I'm not saying that any of these things that we have funded are not responsible, but we don't have the opportunity to vet them adequately to ensure that they are responsible. And I think it puts us in a very uncomfortable situation when this happens. So here is my, here is my suggestion, Madam Chair, because I love you. I have a lot of respect for you. We came in at the same time. We both from Mississippi. I hate that I've been put in this position, but the only way that I can get there on this $15,000 is if we do something along the lines of what Commissioner Maddox suggested. Because there has to be an end. It's just never gonna end. It's gonna be one after another, after another, these last second, and they keep creeping up. It's 5,000, it's 10,000, it's 15,000. At some point, we have to establish a process for doling out this money. We have a process, and these things are operating outside of that process. So I'm going to re-suggest Commissioner Maddox's motion as a substitute, that I will approve this $15,000 allocation for this event. But any future requests that come to us above $2,500 must be an agenda item. And I'm sorry, if there, if it's last minute, I'm sorry. We have to learn how to anticipate these things better because we can't just keep coming to boards of elected officials and asking them for, for these large chunks of money from our, from our balances. So I would, I would politely ask for a second to that motion and, and hope that we can somehow get there in that way. Because I have to have something.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Is there a second? Is there a second to his, his motion?
Madam Chair?
Uh, Commissioner Maddox?
Here's what I want to do. I want to separate the two.
Okay, hold, hold on, hold on a second. I've got a motion on the floor. Either it dies for lack of second, or, um, I'll get a second.
I have a solution to that, Madam Chair. So I was about to say.
Okay, I will, I will second that motion. I'm the chair of the county attorney's.
I will draw my, I will draw my motion. That's the main motion.
Okay. So the motion on the floor is to approve the $15,000 with the provision that any future requests must come before the body as an agenda, as an agenda item. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair?
Hold on a second. Commissioner Caban?
I call the question. That's on the floor.
Oh, you call a question? Okay. All right. The question is called. All those in favor, let it be known by saying.
Madam Chair, the call to question requires a second and a vote.
We do have a second.
On the call to question.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry. Yeah, Commissioner Welch did provide the second on calling the question. Does it need to go to a vote? Okay, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition?
Nay.
Does it need to be unanimous? No, it doesn't. Okay. Permission of Welch's motion is on the floor. Although, you have a comment, Commissioner O'Keefe? Okay, thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you.
No, ma'am, it cannot be debated. After call to question goes straight to the vote, no debate.
Okay, it's no debate. It's an immediate vote. Okay. All those in favor of Permission of Welch's motion, let it be.
What's the motion? Can you recite it? The motion would be to provide, uh, the $15,000 sponsorship to Madam Chair's request with a requirement that any future requests for funding or sponsorships that come from contingency over $2,500 have to require an agenda item.
Okay. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner? Aye. Any opposes?
Nay.
Okay, one opposed. But the majority ruled since we waited. Okay, thank you all. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, my vice chair, uh, for the motion. Is there anything further, Mr. County Administrator? Okay, thank you all so much. Great meeting. Have a great rest of your week. Thank you, audience, employees for being here.